Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of the city of Port Ritchie this 25th day of November 2014. If we'd all rise for the invocation, please.
Father, we thank you. There's someone we can tell to do greater than ourselves, our very Creator, Lord God, that knows really what makes us tick and what's good for us. And so, Lord, we thank you that we can come. This council has the wisdom, Lord God, to look to you. And so, tonight, Father, as we come together, we just pray that you would stir up the wisdom for the decisions to be made, Lord God. We thank you, Father, for a mayor and a council working together, Lord God, for the betterment of this community. Lord, again, while we're together, we do thank you, Lord God, for our chiefs of our police and our fires, Lord, and all those that work here. Lord, we pray for their safety. And, Lord, help us all to see how we can be more understanding, more loving, more kind, helping strengthen one another to lift this city up just to be a place that's people are excited to be in because of the loving goodness that's here. So, we thank you for good wise decisions tonight, in Jesus' name.
Amen. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor Eloise Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Colombo.
Here.
Councilman Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Public.
Here.
And City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
All right. First item is approval of council minutes of November 12, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Announcements, Mr. O'Neill.
None at this time.
Mr. Public.
Nothing from me either, Mayor.
Okay. From the public, Mr. Pastor Lord.
Leonard Lord, I pastorate 8114 Leo Kid Avenue. The year's winding down and we're gonna get busy, so I just wanted to take a moment and thank y'all for your support over the years, for the backpack giveaway, our prayer, the Care Fest, and just really wanted to give a great thanks to the officers that came out there in the Care Fest and brought coffee and donuts. They were out there, it was cold, and just a real blessing to be here and to serve. And just want to wish y'all the greatest of Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and a New Year. We'll be praying for ya in any way we can help. And just with a thought, I'm concerned in that what I see we're doing in our nation to try to push Jesus out of Christmas and all. I remember growing up, one of the greatest things was to go to the park downtown Newport Ritchie and see the major scenes and all the scriptures about the Lord and how safe it made me feel. We didn't lock our doors at home, we didn't lock our cars. We're a community that feared God. The doors of the church were open. And I see things still changing. And I just thank y'all and just want us to be a city that wouldn't be ashamed of the Lord, His goodness, and particularly the lordship of Jesus, and do everything we can to make sure we keep Jesus the reason for the season, because it was the announcement of His birth that said, peace on earth, goodwill toward man. And outside of that, we're hopeless. He's our blessed hope and the anchor of our soul. So, thank you. And any way we can serve you during this season, we want to be here.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. God bless everybody. Have a great, like I say, Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez.
David Martinez, pastor of church in 7920 Conover Street. And I just wanted to invite all of yous. We've partnered up with eight businesses within the community, small businesses, barber shops and so forth, that cater to the community. On Thanksgiving, we will be hosting our annual Thanksgiving giveaway. That day, we usually give free haircuts, free meals, we have bouncy houses and so forth. Hopefully, both the chief of police and the chief of fire department are within that jurisdiction and they can come out and just show the kids some support. We invite you guys also to come by. That's something we're usually there from eight, and by 12 o'clock, we're done. We cater to about 200, 300 people at a time, so it'll be something wonderful. You know, we have the church and the businesses connecting together to serve the best serving community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I just ask that address again, please?
7920 Conover Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you. You too. Mr. Brown.
Thomas Brown, 7436 Candlelight Court. I called the Pasco County Highway Department today and reported the 22 potholes on East Orange Grove Avenue. They told me they'd look into it, but they're running two months behind on potholes. So, maybe sometime next year. There are topics I would like to discuss tonight, but I have not received answers to the questions that I left with the city clerk on November 13. Three questions were asked of an officer of the city. That city officer may not have received my questions until today. Hopefully, I will receive answers before the next city council meeting. Four questions were asked of city permitting department, which may be in turmoil due to resignations. Hopefully, I will receive answers before the next city council meeting. In each case, I provided a self-addressed stamped envelope for the returned answers. When I receive the requested answers, I will be able to address my concerns at the very next city council meeting. However, if the city takes the approach, ignore him, he'll go away. It's going to take longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else from the public? Okay, bring it back to council. Any comments from council?
Yeah, I have just a few quick ones. First of all, being that Thanksgiving and Christmas is just around the corner, with everything that's happening in the world, I hope that the citizens of Port Ritchie reach out to their neighbors and share love within the community, help others that can't help themselves, and just be there for everybody and show some kindness. And also, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes. Next to council business, the first item is the first public hearing on the Cody River Single Family Development Property rezoning. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. As you will see and probably have had an opportunity to review, tonight at your meeting is the first public hearing and reading of the ordinance rezoning the property known as the Cody River Single Family Development. The property is located east of Washington Street, generally between Regis and Broadway, and it amounts to some 32.54 acres. And the largest portion of the property is jurisdictional and is wetlands as we will go over later in this public hearing. The property owner, Bel Air Port Ritchie LLC, has petitioned the city to rezone the subject parcel from its current zoning of R3 to a planned unit development. The purpose of the rezoning is to build 78 single-family homes that would be owner-occupied on the property. The current zoning R3 allows for the construction of 192 units, multifamily units on the property, so the density that is being proposed is considerably less and amounts to 114 less units than currently allowed for. The developer, Mr. Carlos Yepes, has worked with the city. We have used Veranna Consultant, and Ms. Tammy Veranna is here, and she has assisted the city in review of this proposed development. She is a professional planner, and we have used her assistance to provide the concurrency analysis that is in your report, along with the evaluation and recommendations with regard to the PUD. This is a public hearing. Ms. Veranna is going to present to you her findings on this and her recommendations. And then, we do have included in the packet for your consideration the first reading of the ordinance rezoning the property. And I wanted to mention, this was reviewed by the city planning and zoning board. They held a hearing on November 5, and they did vote unanimously to recommend rezoning this parcel to a PUD. Those minutes of that meeting are attached for your review. Just so that you know, they haven't been voted on yet by the PUD, but they were prepared by the city clerk who did attend the meeting. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Tammy Veranna of Veranna Consulting.
Good evening. My name is Tammy.
You might want to pull it out. It might be easier.
I'm technically challenged. There we go. Okay, excellent. Tammy Veranna, Veranna Consulting, Safety Harbor, Florida. Good evening. As Mr. O'Neill indicated, this is a PUD request for 78 single-family units. And the development plan and the standards that are proposed are described in Exhibit A, which is the PUD plan for the Cody River development. The subject site consists of 15.35 upland acres and freshwater wetlands that equal about 17.9 acres. A portion of the onsite wetlands is contiguous to a very large wetland system to the east, north, south, and east of the site. And then, there's an isolated wetland in the middle of the site. The surrounding uses are established single-family neighborhoods to the south and west. There's an office building to the north and a significant wetland system, as I mentioned, to the east. The site's southern boundary is adjacent to a single-family development, which is in the incorporated area of the city of Newport Ritchie. Under the PUD, the applicant has requested a variation from the zoning standards that are in your R3 zoning district. The residential density that they're proposing is a gross density of 2.4 units per acre and a net density of 10.89 units per acre. The minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet. The minimum lot width is 40 feet, and the minimum lot depth is 100 feet. The maximum impervious surface area for the development of the lot is 75 percent, and the maximum building height is 40 feet. The minimum setbacks are as follows. A primary front yard of 20 feet, with some exceptions for lots that were, are limited in depth because of the drainage, the wetland retaining walls on the backside of those lots. The secondary front yard for corner lots is 10 feet. The side yard would be 5 feet, rear yard 20 feet, and any ride, or any lots that are external and adjacent to a right-of-way would need to have 35 feet between the structure and the adjacent right-of-way line. So, I performed a consistency review with your land development code under section 2.44, parent B, parent 1, and I'll go through those individually. So, for the first one, A, the proposed single-family use is within a single-family context, so would not constitute spot zoning. Relative to the existing land use pattern, the proposed single-family square foot lot area, 4,000 square feet, is smaller than the surrounding typically 15,000 square foot lots in the adjacent neighborhoods. However, the development is well buffered on most sides, and the conditions of approval require a high-quality landscaping and fencing along Washington and also along Broadway. The proposed rezoning would not create an isolated district unrelated to adjacent and nearby districts, and the proposed PUD district boundaries are logical. They follow the development in a rectangular fashion, except for around the wetlands. The proposal is not anticipated to have adverse effects on living conditions in the immediate neighborhood or surrounding neighborhoods, and the present request for a maximum of 78 dwelling units represents a 114-unit reduction from the previously approved development allowing 192 units. There is adjacent, there's adequate access to the site. A primary access is shown on the PUD plan on Washington Street opposite Alto Avenue, and a secondary exit-only access is shown on Broadway Avenue. The primary access, which will be gated and controlled by an automated access system, will be designed to allow stacking of three vehicles so that there will be no impediments to traversing Washington Street by the general public, and clear-site triangles will be maintained. The projected peak hour trips would be 80 trips, 50 inbound, and 30 outbound, and it is not anticipated to create a traffic congestion or safety issues on that street. The proposed development would not affect air and light to adjacent properties. The proposed single-family dwellings would be a combination of one and two stories. The side setbacks would be 5 feet, providing a 10-foot separation between dwellings. And as I said before, the development is separated from existing developments by wetlands or by street rightaways, so would not affect those adjacent properties. The proposed development will offer market-rate, single-family housing. The development is not anticipated to create physical or operational conditions in the peaceful residential context that would lead to property devaluation of surrounding, of the adjacent neighborhood. In addition to the PUD zoning conditions of approval, which are Exhibit B in your packet, all modifications, uses, activities on the site must meet all applicable regulations of the city, the state, and any other federal and state law. The proposed rezoning is not anticipated to deter improvement of adjacent properties. New dwelling units and the physical improvements on the subject site should positively contribute to the visual aesthetics and to the benefit of bordering residential areas. The PUD concept plans delineate suitable upland areas of the subject site for residential development and then wetland areas that will be preserved in their current state. Public facilities are currently available and adequate to serve the proposed 78 single-family dwelling units. And again, this relates to transportation, stormwater drainage, portable water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, and solid waste. The base flood elevation of the site is 13 feet with an average site elevation of 12 feet. The area is considered a special flood hazard area. Any structures built would need to have, would need to supply an elevation certificate stating the exact height of the finished-floor base flood elevation prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the city. The site has been physically altered in the past, including construction of an internal street network and water and sewer infrastructure to serve a previously approved development. The proposed development, as said before, must meet all applicable policies, standards, and regulations of the city's comprehensive plan and code of ordinances and state and federal law, including wetland protection laws. The proposed zoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the City of Port Ritchie Comprehensive Plan. Specific policies of the future land use element, housing element, and conservation and coastal management element are listed in the staff report. In your conditions of approval, Exhibit B, I'll just highlight a few of the items. I won't go through all of them, but I certainly will be here to answer questions if you have them. The conditions of approval for this development would expire unless the developer has received site development permits within 180 days of the PUD approval by city council. After this time, the PUD would expire. However, the developer does have the option of extending the date by an additional 90 days through written notice to the city manager. The wetland conservation areas and wetland buffer conservation areas will be recorded in a perpetual easement, and there will be a responsible entity assigned to maintain those wetland areas. As part of the conditions of approval, the developer shall provide a park on not less than one contiguous acre of developable upland in accordance with the land development code. However, there are provisions in the code, the conditions of approval that provide for off-site park location, improvements, and/or a monetary contribution to satisfy that requirement. And that must be submitted prior to, or with the application for construction plan review. So, it must be, the agreement must be executed prior to that time, or simultaneous. At minimum, the aesthetic treatments shall include fencing and landscaping along the public right-of-way, including Washington Street and Broadway, and details of the aesthetic treatments will be submitted with the preliminary development plan, and then staff will be able to review those to determine if they are of a sufficient quality. The maintenance of those areas will be performed by responsible entity, most likely a homeowners association. The development's 78 single-family dwelling units will be offered at prevailing market rates. No obstruction or service equipment shall be allowed in side yards for the five-foot setback for each structure, so that would allow for access to the rear property. Traffic circulation internal to the site, the sidewalks must be a minimum of four feet, and the Washington Street segment, sidewalk segment adjacent to the property will be reconstructed by the applicant to straighten out the existing 90-degree curves near the project entrance, and the developer will apply a highly visible crosswalk at that location for pedestrian crossing. The development must maintain that secondary functional access for emergency purposes, and private streets are proposed. So, private streets, if that's the way the developer decides to go forward, they will be constructed to the city's standards, and dedication and maintenance shall be the responsibility of a responsible entity. The developer shall provide evidence from a professional engineer that all water and wastewater facilities within the development meet all applicable city and state standards. The developer shall install onsite irrigation lines to city standards to the future reclaimed water service, and the responsible entity shall provide perpetual maintenance to all drainage easements. And that concludes my staff report and conditions of approval overview. So, if you have any questions, I'm-
Questions from council? Nancy.
I have some residents in the community concerned with drainage. Can you explain, you know, we have wetlands over there, and some of the citizens are concerned that, you know, where's all the water going to go, once you build all those properties in there?
I'm going to defer that to the applicant's attorney, and probably, I'm not an engineer, so I didn't review the drainage plans, but city development review staff did.
Just to address that directly, the drainage system is already permitted and constructed over there with the previous infrastructure that's been built on the site. Any modifications will require the approval of SWF Mod. And the, just to basically summarize what's there, the post-development discharge from the site will not exceed the pre-development discharge, which means there is no additional discharge from the site. It's contained on the property.
I remember you said that.
Please do.
And market value, what are you, is there an idea of what the cost of these properties will be?
Maybe the applicant should respond to these. I just know that it won't be designated as affordable housing.
Please?
It wouldn't be designated as affordable housing. So, it's just offered at market rate. But would you like the applicant to come up to answer the question?
Well, that's no, not yet. I want you to finish your questions with council before we turn to the applicant.
Okay.
Okay. I'll do that.
Anybody else? Okay, I've got a couple, one of which reiterates the stormwater concerns. This property is a butt's Candlelight. Candlelight has had a historic problems with flooding, and I've heard what Mr. O'Neill says. However, I think, and I may be as a poster child for what happens when drainage isn't addressed in community development, so I've got a particular focus on this one. Because of the drainage issues in that area, I'm not assured by anything I've seen that we've addressed it adequately to prevent any further issues with drainage in the area. In addition, I have all kinds of problems with landscaping and fencing provisions that are in the PUD, because I do not see any criteria or standards, except that the developer will landscape and do some adequate fencing. What is that? I looked at the pictures. They look like they're plastic fencing around the development. To me, that is not aesthetically adequate for a planned unit development, which is supposed to have some flexibility and attractiveness as a part of it. You look in particular on note number, I think it's 11, on the PUD plan, and it is vague as I can possibly construe it. Landscaping and other aesthetic treatments will serve to integrate the proposed development visually and functionally. To me, that's not a standard, okay? In addition, the fencing doesn't have a standard. On the park, the one-acre park, which may be off-site because there's no provision in the PUD for the onsite park. It defers to the city attorney or the city manager for where that park is or what considerations. I can't accept that. In particular, on the ordinance provision. There's language. See if I can find it. It is on page, well, it depends on how, which copy you have. It's on page four of the ordinance, but of our packet, it's page 13 of 103, and it is section three, which says, "This ordinance shall supersede all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith." To me, that is totally inconsistent with Exhibit B. So, at a bare minimum, the language needs to be changed in that section to, and I don't see any place that the ordinance incorporates Exhibit B. Traffic. I see that you've not recommended right-turn or left-turn lanes into the PUD. On the, I believe on the prior PUD, there were long discussions about right-turn lanes or access lanes, and you, the requirements are that it provides for stacking for three vehicles going into the subdivision. To me, because that is a narrow two-lane road in kind of disrepair, and you're adding 78 dwellings and traffic at peak hour in the morning and the afternoon, something further on right-turn or left-turn lanes needs to be done in order to accommodate the traffic issues. I'm concerned about what kind of market that this developer is gearing, you know, what age market, what kind of dwellings are we going to have in this subdivision, what kind of square footage, what is the price range? Because all of that impacts not only how it impacts the community, but also traffic impacts as well. Let me just say, as kind of prefaced all of this, is that development in this area would enhance certainly the current condition of what we have. And would, I personally would welcome a project to ameliorate the unsightlyness of the area, but we still have, I think, overreaching traffic, aesthetic, and flooding issues that simply have not, in my opinion, been adequately addressed as well as the park.
Mayor, you noted, and this may be related to your question as well. You noted in regards to the square footage standard, and as noted in consistency review- And as noted in Consistency Review six, Section B, the proposed single-family minimum four thousand square feet.
That's a lot size.
Right. Setting a minimum standard, I think, as she noted. The surrounding neighborhood typically fifteen thousand square feet. And there's reference to the existing R3, six thousand square feet. It does say, "The development well buffered existing vegetation, et cetera." And does say additionally, as you referenced, the applicant has indicated that the developer will install high-quality landscaping and fencing that is designed to integrate the new development with the surrounding neighborhood, so.
To me, that's no criteria, that's no standard.
Right.
You know, it's a vague promise.
I agree. That's all I have.
Okay.
And I believe the applicant can speak more to those-
Very good.
...details. Thank you.
Just as a brief comment, while Mr. Yappes is coming up. We certainly can address the drainage issues, and it will meet all of the SWIFTMUD requirements. Keeping in mind, the nearby subdivision will have, from time to time, some drainage issues because it was constructed prior to SWIFTMUD review and jurisdiction over drainage, which this development is subject to. Landscaping and fencing was addressed at the P&amp;Z board. Mr. Yappes has a very specific alternative to propose for the fencing. He discussed that. And with regard to language and so forth, the city attorney can address that, but I would invite you to speak.
Before you start, I didn't get a copy of the P&amp;Z minutes with my packet. And I don't know what the rest of you did or not. I didn't get it.
No.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Carlos Jefes Belair Development, Penales Park. We have worked very hard with the staff to get to this point. And one of the things that you referenced today about the landscaping, we wanted to have the staff have some flexibility to, for us to propose different things. Have the staff's ultimate decision on what to put in there. Right now, we are looking at maybe doing along the front on Washington, landscaping in front of the wall. There's a precast panels that have texture on it. It's not a PVC fence. Originally, we were allowed to put a PVC fence with columns. But we're looking at an alternative that will dress it up even more. The community will be gated. And with regards to the drainage comment that was made, the community currently has a SWIFTMUD approval and permit because it was built. If you're familiar, this community, all the roads were built, all the infrastructure's there. So, I think the end result, we're actually removing some of the asphalt, shrinking the impervious area, and therefore, it should be a plus. At the end of the day, if we went out and built today the one hundred and ninety-two homes, really, nothing needs to be changed, and it's working and it's doing what it's supposed to do. The size of the properties and the values, which were the question of the market value, what the intention for that comment was, that this was not an assisted housing program that we're putting in there. This is gonna be whatever the market can bear. There's gonna be, houses are probably gonna be between fourteen hundred to maybe as high as twenty-two hundred square feet, which relates to, in the marketplace, somewhere between two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. That's the, kind of, the developer has entered into an agreement with D.R. Horton, who's gonna be a national builder for the homes. They're gonna build all of the homes. So, he's a national company in charge of doing the sales, marketing, and building of physical vertical building. As you're aware, D.R. Horton's a national company, very well established and great reputation. If we agree with the staff's comments, and want to thank the staff for working with us over the past few months to get to this point. If there are any questions that I may answer, be glad to.
The park.
The park. We have two options. One is, your court allows us to maybe go improve an existing park. We have actually under contract the property to the north of our development. And we're working now to bring that property into our development to create a park contiguous to the development. We have approximately three and a half acres of property to the north of us right now. An idea, the idea is to come back and maybe either have a regular, small PUD for that property, or annex it to this PUD to blend it in and put more lots in there and create that park. We do have another option, which was in case that fails, we will go do something off-site or work something with the city. And it's up to the city for final approval, not up to us, to what we can do for that, to meet that requirement.
Go ahead. Nancy.
The property to the north, are you talking about the physician's office?
No, it's, there's a vacant property to the east of the doctor's office that abuts our property. It's on our north boundary. And currently, we have it under contract and just finished the survey, and we're doing the delineation of the wetlands because it actually has some wetlands. And then we are designing everything else and trying to keep that park within and connected to our community. We were not prepared to bring it to this meeting or to the prior meeting because it's just a process to get the delineations and get all the engineering done and approvals. Because the property currently is on C1, I believe, or C1 or C2. And we have to bring it back here to kind of get that rezoned or approved. If that fails for some reason, we'll have to go off-site, which there are other properties available right next to us. And if that fails, we can also work with the city on improving one of your existing parks, which is what the court allows.
Anyone else?
Mention about the turning. Does he want to address the turning?
The turn line, there is actually an existing turn lane to the property today. And that was one of the reasons they originally did the ninety-degree turn on the sidewalk. We spoke with Tamiya and to a different staff, and they want us to soften that turn. If someone comes in a bicycle, they can't make a ninety-degree turn. So, we're gonna take the sidewalk and do it on an S, bring it back in. Right now, even though we're stacking three vehicles on the property, there is room to stack if you happen to have a line of cars coming in, where you still have, traffic can continue to flow because there is a turn lane into the property today that was built by the private developer.
And my concern was that you'd stay there.
Oh, yes. No, we don't, we are not proposing to remove it. No. I don't know.
Because in the language that I read, there was a possibility that would be eliminated. And I do not believe that is in the best interest of traffic.
That is in this public right-of-way. It's not on our property, so the city has the ultimate decision. Because it is a city road.
Go ahead. Come on. If you've got a comment on that, come on.
No, no. What I said was gonna be eliminated was the S curve in the sidewalk.
But not the turn line?
No.
It's just that the sidewalk has a ninety-degree turn. So, if someone was on a bicycle, it's hard to make the ninety-degree turn.
Okay. Tell me again about the fencing.
We are, the original plan was to build columns of brick or stone and then use the, put a PVC fence that goes in between, and then do landscaping in front. We're looking at another concept that has been utilized by D.R. Horton and many of the high-end builders in a lot of communities, that is a precast concrete panel that has texture to it. It looks like stone, or it looks like, has different designs on it. And it seems to be a more durable. One of our concerns is wind. In some of the communities that we looked in, in Hernando County, the PVC fencing that was installed got damaged. Turns out to be that it was the grade of the PVC that they use that creates the slots to come off the headers and the bottom supports. So, but they were not supported by columns. So, we are proposing called concrete columns that are either decorated with brick or with stone. And then we're gonna have an entry gate that will follow the same, and the same as designed for the community.
I thought I had a picture of what the proposed housing was to look like.
Oh, the physical house?
Yeah.
Yes, there was a picture floating around with the last planning zoning meeting that had been proposed from D.R. Horton. This is a new product for them in their line. They came up with a new floor plans, new elevations. One of the residents wanted to know what they would look like, and we showed them some pictures of what we're thinking about. Some of the houses will be two-story, some of them will be one-story, depending on the market demand.
We don't have that in our packet.
I don't think it really was an intention to give you something and say, "This is gonna be it." Because we don't, if the market says you gotta change something in the outside, and we don't wanna be saying that we presented X and we're building Y. So, it's pretty much a single-story and two-story community.
Now, let me clarify. You're gonna have five feet on either side of the homes, in between the homes.
Correct.
Twenty feet in the front.
Correct.
And forty feet in the back?
Correct. Well, actually, in some cases, more.
Depending on the size of the lot. They say they vary.
On the size of the lot. And we have also a buffer area to the wetlands, for example, when we have preserves in the back. So, it gives you the perception of more depth there.
Absolutely, yes.
And this product is being built all over Hillsborough County today. And also in Polk County. In Basco and Polk County, they have been used to larger lots just because there is more land. But you take Penales County and Hillsborough County, certain areas where we're very small areas to develop. And to get a community, you wanna have at least fifty homes. So, they have gone to forty-foot lots and to make it more affordable for the consumer. So, what they do is they take a smaller setback and put the equipment in the back, the air conditioning, for example. So, there is no obstruction in between the two lots.
But if they leave their cars out in the driveway, and you try and take a walk in the subdivision, you just basically have to walk around cars constantly.
No, because they do have garages.
Well, I know, but nobody uses them. They put junk in their garage. The other question I have, and I, you know, this is, I'm just really curious. You know, there's a methadone clinic right next door.
Correct.
Okay. Do you, what do you see? Any issues with that?
No, we'd like the city to relocate it somewhere.
Rats-a-ruck. Believe me, I live over in that part of town. And when it came into the area, there was nothing we could do to stop it. And-
Unfortunately, it isn't.
Yeah. And-
Oh, we looked at buying-
Hold your breath.
Yeah, we looked at buying the property, combining it to the north and doing something. And we're still talking with an idea there to see if it works, but I don't know. It's just, the problem is the structure because they actually bought the property. So, we'll see. But-
Well, you know, that could be your park area. Or how about a little recreation center for your, or a clubhouse for your residents?
Well, dealing with nonprofits is a challenge, so you have to... We have talked to them, and I don't know where that's gonna go, but at this moment, we can't wait for that to happen.
May I make a brief comment?
Yes.
Okay. First off, I apologize for the information that was not in the packet that should have been in there. The options in front of you, which you certainly can do, and I would understand this completely, is we could continue this public hearing until December nine, if you decide you wanted to. So, the answers to the questions and additional information could be provided to you in advance of the meeting. So, once again, you could either approve this on first reading and get your additional information as requested, or you could continue this public hearing to December nine.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm here to answer whatever questions you may have. If you have any other questions, be glad to clarify or help.
Anyone else, anything else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain any members of the public wishing to address this. Yes, sir. Mr. Brown.
Thomas Brown, Candlelight Court. I fear no flooding from this project. I've lived on Candlelight Court for more than thirty years, and twice, we've had almost a foot of water in the street that stayed there for a day or two. And none of the approximately twenty-five homes were threatened with getting water in their house or even in their garage. So, it doesn't come up. We're all raised well above the street, and they never reached one foot of water in the street. And they are gonna take up some blacktop over there, so there'll be more drainage. And when you were allowed to drive through there, I drove through, and their storm drains are quite nice. I'm no engineer, but they look good. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Boulevard. Madam Mayor, members of council. I think, Madam Mayor, you articulated correctly in here that a development over there would, how should we say, improve the looks of the piece by all means. I think you have a great opportunity here with Belair. They're a known entity. They've done projects throughout the state, actually even some in our locale in here. And I think you have a good opportunity with this group and to be able to go ahead and move forward. There is always points of concern anytime you get involved, especially in the idea of, you know, the implementation of a PUD. You know, SWIFTMUD is great, you know, on here, but, you know, you will be listening to the people when their houses flood or the streets flood, et cetera, in there. So, just, you know, be cognizant of that in there. The idea of having something protracted with respect to, as an example, the park or a proposed park, I think it'd probably something would be more prudent to settle at this stage, at least the vehicle, how it's going to be. I have an agree with the mayor again here that the idea, the council probably should be more responsible as to what ultimately will happen. Whether it's gonna be a monetary issue, it's going to be a park, improvement to a park somewhere else in there, or ultimately, what may or may not happen on the property itself. I think, again, as I say, to compliment Belair again, I think they'll do a really good job for you. And I think, too, it would probably behoove the city to approach them about some issues that may be existing over there right now. They do, are providing subtly access, okay, to their property. I know we've had a problem with Orange Drive over there. The city's on occasion, okay, have tried to repair that road. They're looking for a top-shelf development, okay, so to speak, there on it. And I think it would probably prudent to have a conversation with them about maybe them being able to come in and help us out, okay, with that paving. Even though that is a county road, we have expressed to the county on numerous occasions, numerous occasions, excuse me, in here, that we would go ahead and be willing to pay half. I think this is probably a prudent time, maybe to discuss with Mr. F., you know, on the possibilities of maybe helping the city out with this respect in there because it's not only going to improve, okay, some access to its properties in there, but it also in there would be a token of good, I should say, character and feeling towards him coming to the city in there with his development, et cetera. So, and I think, having been aware of them historically, I think it'd be a good idea to have a conversation with them. I don't think there would be prohibitive to at least addressing it. Other than that, you know, I think this, the idea of tabling it in here or postponing it to the ninth, if you could get these few things resolved, might be better in there. But if not, and I would not, I would hate to see it be tabled to the first of the year. It'd be something I would like to see, possibly, that the city can move on because I know in these types of situations, time is money in here. They've expended a lot of money to get it to the stage in here. So, I think a decision from the city would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
I think just a question, was there anybody else?
No, no, I didn't see anyone. Go ahead.
I think, as Jim just noted, what sticks out is with the issue of the park that was referenced. And if you look, it was just mentioned when we think of, you know, what was noted earlier by the gentleman. You know, an off-site, doing another location, there were a lot of variables there. You know, maybe, as was noted by our resident, you know, that might be a possibility.
Just real one quick, one thing I don't wanna see is a park in that section of town. It just, it's not good. We, you know, we put a gazebo up, and it was a mess. And so, adding a park there that's not contained within the subdivision would not be a good idea.
Yeah, the gazebo had to be moved.
We had to, we had to move the gazebo.
Had to be relocated. So, you know, I think Councilwoman Britton's correct. You know, is there a particular, you know, is- You know, is there a particular, you know, as Jim noted, a, a trade-off in relation to the park, um, that would then push this maybe to the ninth? I guess is my question. I know we've addressed three of those items, the park, the turn, uh, also the landscaping, the fencing, um, uh, you know, that whole buffer situation. Obviously, there may be one or two things still to address, so, um, you know, do we need to look at the ninth to take that into consideration and, and note what those are?
I believe we do, simply because it's the verbiage that's, you know, right here in front of us right now, so, I mean, if, if nothing else, to clarify the verbiage.
Yeah, I, I, personally, I'd like, um, the issue of the park to be addressed and decided on by council. And decided, uh, before we go, uh, forward with, uh, the final approval, I'd like to see a change in the language, the specific language of the ordinance, um, if you, if you need us, um... In particular, Section Three, I would, um... Yeah, the ordinance shall supersede all ordinances or parts. I think that needs to, um, be tightened up to recognize that Exhibit B are the conditions, and, um, they need to be incorporated and adhered to with respect to this. I think some of the issues of the, uh, turn lanes have been dealt with, uh, stormwater. I, um, Mr. Brown says that, uh, it operates sufficiently, so, you know, that is, that is a overarching, uh, concern, that development not spill over or exacerbate the existing conditions, and if the, if the problem is, or the issue is under control and we don't anticipate any further degradation, then that's, that satisfies me. I have one additional question, if you'd come up, please. You indicated that there's gonna be a, a second exit out of the subdivision onto Broad.
Yes, correct.
And that's only an exit only and not-
Yes, it's a gate on demand. You can come up, the gate will open. So, it was, it's a gated community, and that gate, uh, a community of the size needs to have two exits. So, that's why the other, the other exit's there. And did that, uh, did that answer your question, Professor?
Yes, it answered my question.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
We would like to see if council would consider approving and having the issue of the specifics of the park be your decision or the staff's decision to be, because we need an agreement with the city that specifically in the code requires that we have to have an agreement before we go to develop. So, it gives you a chance to put in the agreement what you want, instead of delay, delay. If you can approve it, and it's conditioned to approval, you have to approve the agreement. We have two options. We actually have three-
What I'm hearing from council is we want some input, uh, before we approve this as to what the parameters of that resolution are gonna be.
Right, but what I'm saying is you have three, there are three options. Either we provide a park inside the community by code. Second option, we provide it off-site, and, or the third option is we give money to, for the city to do something with another park. Whatever that agreement is going to look like, you all are going to have input. It doesn't need to be necessarily a public hearing. It's your, your input, your legal team and your staff and your, all the council members will decide on what needs to be done.
That's not my reading of it. It, uh, was that the city manager and the city attorney were gonna, uh, make the resolution to that, and I hear from council that we want before we approve this. Is that not correct?
Correct.
That we want some input, uh, because we, as a council, don't feel the most appropriate one is the three-and-a-half acre parcel that you've got adjacent to your subdivision? And that because of, um, you know, it, it may be more, um, beneficial to the city and the residents to, uh, look at enhancements of existing park areas-
Sure.
-as the alternative that we desire, and I'd like us to decide that.
Well, that, that would be great. I've done, we don't have any objection to that option, that if we do buy the property adjacent to us, the park will be totally internal to us. So, that will meet the code to be, if the park was inside a community, so you don't have to worry about a public park. If the second option will be off-site, and off-site, definitely you will wanna know where it's gonna be and what it's gonna be. But still, the off-site park will be a private park, it's not a public park. The third option will be to advance monies to improve an existing park that you may have. So, in the first two sections, sections of the ordinance will be private parks onsite or offsite, and the third option will be for you guys to decide what, what's reasonable, what to do. So, you have the ultimate decision for that agreement.
Excuse me, can I just ask a quick question? The park outside the property would be a private park, how would that be?
It would be a private, a private park for the benefit of the residents.
So, how would you keep everybody else out?
You fence it, you give a gate, you get a control key or, or an access point to the park?
Just as, just as a comment, um, it was not our intention to, uh, when we put this information together, to finalize anything on behalf of the staff. Uh, I am much more comfortable with the council having the final say on any interior or exterior off-site improvements or monetary contributions. The monetary contributions may be a good solution here, dependent upon the ultimate build-out of the, the development. The, uh, um, the code requires that that agreement be negotiated prior to construction permits being issued for the homes. And so, uh, I am much more comfortable with that agreement, whatever it may be, uh, being approved and reviewed by the city council.
On his behalf, when we were negotiating all these conditions, Tom told us, I don't want that decision, it should not be mine, it should be the city council's. If that didn't come across tonight, that's what he wanted to do, and, and we, and we're okay with that. It's fine.
So, it would seem, Tom, as you're indicating, let me get, make sure I'm correct, that Option Three is basically presented, is that right? I mean, when you look at what's been noted, within, outside, or current enhancement of a park we already have, four parks?
Yeah, it could, that's yet to be resolved, and it typically would not be resolved at this stage of the game. So, you know, once again, um, I'm very comfortable with this being continued so we could work out these issues and get you the additional information that you've requested in advance of the meeting.
And this would come-
December nine.
For the December ninth?
If I may say, by December nine, we will not be able to have, we gotta rezone the property next door, do all kinds of things to, to make, resolve that park issue. I think the park issue is something that we have time to resolve with the council. In the meantime, we can have our civil engineer and our plotting and all that stuff that we have to do to get there and get it progress. It's still gonna be a little while before we actually get in the ground. So, get, get the table going, and then you have the ultimate decision on that, what that agreement is gonna look like.
What I'm suggesting here is that we have language specifically and explicitly that states, uh, that the final decision with regard to the park improvements, whether they be onsite or offsite, be subject to the approval of the city council.
Not exactly, because there's a third option, which is the park, uh, funding of, of, of improvements of an existing park, and I, and I, I think you talked about the first two options in what you said, onsite or offsite park, but that is still the private park. As opposed to what I think is the council's option, which is-
Three.
-the improvement of existing, one of the existing city parks.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that all of it be subject to the final approval of the council.
I just wanna make sure all of them were in.
Right, if, if we, if we're able to do the onsite or offsite, we prefer the onsite park option, but it's not, it may not be viable, it may not be possible due to the existing property being zoned commercial to the north. Let's assume that is, if that, if we acquire the property, it still has to come here to be rezoned and to be down that path. So, I think the code gives us in or out, the third option is for you guys to make a decision what you want us to improve, or to give you the money to you to go improve. That's the one thing that has not been quantified at any point. So, I think if we have the approval that says Option One and Two, we can do, 'cause that's the rule. Option Three, which is the money or where to spend the money, that's your decision. So, I think it's relatively simple, that we can go spend the money in the park that we want. You tell us where you want us to go improve, or if you wanna do something else with the money, that's up to the city.
If that is in a move for Option Three, and we have the second reading, um, is that still, I, I hear comments on that? I'm just curious.
Bonhoe?
Excuse me, I was reading the code.
Being that we have a second reading, obviously, and, uh, again, just, I, I, I'm not hearing from all the council members, but obviously, um, as presented, One, Two, and Third Option, obviously, the Third Option would seem to be the favor. We have four parks. Uh, he's talked about, you know, the first two options. Uh, we know what the Third Option presents. That specific language would be within on the second reading, right?
You can't really make anything major changes. I think that'd be a substantive change to this and would require to go back to a first reading.
Okay.
So, that, I mean-
That's my question, yeah.
You can make minor modifications and tweaks to it, but anything like that, I think is a more of a major modification, which requires you to start back at square one with another first reading.
And more to the point, too, um, if we go to the Third Option, as it's becoming named, um, we need a, a basic definition of what type of park, size of park, and cost of park most, you know?
Well, Option Three is to, um, to donate, as I understand it, donation of money.
That's what I'm saying.
One of our existing-
But what I, I, I agree, no, no, I, I understand that. My point being is that vaguely saying a donation of money, you know, differences of opinion on how much a such, you know, substitution is worth.
Right. And that's the part that concerns us, is how much is enough or how much is not enough? You may think five thousand dollars is enough, someone else, something else is, if we can-
I can tell you my experience, there aren't a damn thing you could do with a park around here for five thousand dollars.
So, my point is if we can agree on an amount of dollars, then it really takes it away, and it's done, and you can figure out what you wanna do with it.
Right.
We know that we have three options, then, is put our own park, go next door, create our own private park, or pay the money. So, I think it's, it's an idea of how much money.
And that's what I was basically getting at, is that, um, the underlying zoning provides, I'm sure, some guidelines as to what type of park is acceptable to meet the code, correct?
Not really.
So, it could just be-
But that's why, you know-
A bench with an umbrella on board?
Once again, uh, you know, I, I, I believe that it should be subject to your final approval.
I understand that. I'm just telling you, I'm gonna want some numbers to go by. I'm just not gonna sit here and pull numbers, you know, you know, and shoot darts at the wall and see what comes up.
But if we have an agreement in place that says that it's subject to your approval, you know, whatever agreement works out here, because what Mr. Yuffis is saying is, he doesn't have all the details, he doesn't have the proposal, he doesn't have, you know, cost equivalence for, you know, the type of park that would be required onsite, uh, and so, but whatever those work out to be, uh, would typically be negotiated between now and when the permits were issued, and what I'm saying is whatever's worked out needs to come back to you for your final approval.
With this substantive change-
Yes.
-has to be, uh, in the first reading, so that really puts us to the December ninth period, I would assume.
May I say something on the, with regards to the park? Some people may be thinking that a park has to have equipment or all these other things. Not necessarily, it's an area of people to, any, just enjoy the area. Uh, it could be a picnic park, or it could be just a nice open area. I believe the code, Tammy, if I'm not correct, it says, uh, open area for the enjoyment of the residents.
Oh, not less than one.
Containing area, uh, plans exclusive of wetlands area for unobstructed play.
Yeah, that's the code.
It's just, it's just an area for, basically, a grass area for an unobstructed play. So, we're not thinking of all this equipment or, or playgrounds or things. And, and that's, that's really all we're saying, is we can create that park next door, it's be just an open area. But if, if you're, if you're willing to come up with a number- By November, by the ninth, we can probably maybe put that in the resolution, you, you, by November ninth, to come up with a number, and then we'll consider that option.
May I just ask, um, is, uh, you know, what size this park needs to be? Is there, is there a-
That's, that's, yeah.
Huh?
That's kinda what I was driving-
One acre.
One acre park, one acre.
Oh, okay. So, one acre of, of land, and what's the going rate, right?
There's your number.
We need a chance to talk about this-
Sure.
-and, uh, and address the council's concerns.
Okay.
And so, is it, uh, is it sufficient that we put in, uh, for the revision of the ordinance that, um... That, um, it's, uh, the park is subject to, um, council's approval at, um, at the final reading?
I think so, and I, I think, you know, if you give us a chance to work on that and it comes back for first reading on December nine, does that work for you, Mr. Yuffis?
Yeah, that's fine, you know, I, really, I, we're here to work with you and try not to kill the messenger or the, or the project, but we're, we're, we wanna still have the flexibility of creating the park for our own benefit, meaning within our own community. Uh, that's an option that we would like to do, because if it works for us, it could be very nice to do it internally. If the constraints of the adjacent property fails to meet what we need and expect out of it, we have to go offsite, and we, there is land available directly right next to us in both directions to create this private park, but if we go to the Third Option, which is money or improve a park, to give you a hundred percent control of what you wanna do, it's really the option that we're talking about. One and Two, we can do. Number Three is, let's see what the city will approve.
By the ninth?
We want number three.
Excuse me, my name's David Gori with Bel Air Development. Tom and, uh, city attorney, would one option be to have a condition of approval for the PUD, be that a developer's agreement would be reached prior to site plan approval or construction permit? Would that be a viable option?
I, I would think that, I would be comfortable with that, uh, because whatever the conditions are, they haven't been resolved yet, they haven't been finalized, and the only thing I think that, that I would recommend to the council is that we reach agreement, we reach the specifics, and then that needs to come back to the council for their final approval at some point in the future.
Right, and that, you know, the ultimate goal here is for construction permit approval. So, if we had a condition of approval for the PUD, that we must reach a developer agreement between the city and the developer for how to handle the park prior to any site plan approval permit being released, I think that that would give everybody ample time to really fine-tune what the city wants and to work that out with us, instead of just trying to throw something together and, you know, the next week.
I believe Tammy's, Tammy's conditions already say that.
Can I put something out just for your consideration? Under the conditions of approval, Item Ten, which is related to this topic, the very last, the last sentence says, "The lake, location of the park shall be shown on the preliminary plan, or if, if provided offsite, all necessary agreements, such as those pertaining to land purchase or use, park improvements, and/or monetary contribution, will be executed by city council," we could add that, "prior to or simultaneous with the application for construct, construction plan review for the development." So, I believe that we could just add, "will be executed by city council," and it may, it may resolve this.
And that, that's, uh, it seems to address it as long as the language in Section Three of the ordinance is also changed to incorporate it on Exhibit B.
We're okay with that.
Anything else? Anything else? I'm going to throw it out to the public one last time. Anybody else have any comments before we finally address this?
Richard Melton, 53, 42, Blue Point. I've, I've listened to this quite extensively, and I think it, we need to make an opportunity here. I think we need to let, let this thing ride, let's address the park at a later date, and get these people's money, and get this show on the road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now, is anything else from the public? Last chance, any other, any other issues? So we have this PUD approval in front of us, subject to some small tweaks in Exhibit B, on section 10, and section three of the ordinance to provide for the incorporation of Exhibit B. Okay? Is there anything else that anybody wants to address? All right. I, I guess we need the ordinance read by Captain.
Ordinance 14642, an ordinance of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, amending the Port Ritchie zoning atlas on land here after described from multi, multiple-family residential R3 zoning category to zoning category plan, unit development, PUD, in accordance with provisions of section 166.041 Florida statutes, provided for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date. Cody River, single-family development.
Thank you. Tom?
My understanding was that we were going to continue the public hearing, because it was not, okay?
Wasn't one. Why?
Because the one change we talked about was more than a minor change?
I think the change is making an amendment to 10 of the conditions to require the approval specifically by city council, and tightening up the language under section three is not substantive enough to require a new change. I think we can make those changes on this first reading.
If you're comfortable, I certainly am.
I am.
Are you comfortable, or are we comfortable, with the fencing in the front, the frontage, the look of the frontage?
Well, what has been described is an improvement over what I saw in pictures.
Yeah.
So it, you know, it's up to you.
I mean, are we going to have some type of safety net in this thing to make sure that that's the look we get?
I will just haunt them. I'll just be over there every day yelling at them.
Under that section 11, which deals with that, that fencing, where it says, or other acceptable fence style, you could change that as determined by city council, so that fence style would come back to you guys, if that would satisfy for that determination.
So that's section 11? So we have section 10, section three, and section 11?
Yeah, I think the only change necessary under 11 to achieve that is just to change city manager to city council. And then any changes to that will come back to this board to determine if you like it or you don't.
Okay. Okay.
That covers it, then, section 10, section three, and section 11, regarding ordinance number 14, 642.
Well, section three of the ordinance, and sections 10 and 11 of Exhibit B.
Of the conditions, yes.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll a second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes.
Of course, we included several, but that comes back to us, so.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item. What do we have? Final payment request on Bay Boulevard, Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, I would like for this matter to be pulled from tonight's agenda. We have some issues currently with the contractor on this, and they are not resolved at this time.
Okay. Then item four, final payment request of Queenor Avenue, lift station rehabilitation project.
Yes, this is on the agenda. The work envisioned in the contract has been complete, and the work, as you see, was to increase the slab elevation, to protect the station from flooding, new pumps, controls, and new valve pits, and so forth. The bid award on the project was $143,847.07, the majority of which is funded by Community Development Block Grant. The work has been inspected by CND Engineering, and meets with their approval, and additionally has been inspected by the city staff, and meets with our approval. It is recommended that we issue final payment for this project.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll a second.
All right. Any discussion from council?
Can we really be finally finished with Queenor Lift Station?
Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to the side? Say, none? We have a motion, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay? It passes. And finally, we have a discussion of the Christmas holiday event. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, I had some discussions with Councilwoman Nancy Britton regarding this, and activities that the city and city staff have engaged in in the past, and so at this point, I think it'd be appropriate for Ms. Britton to speak on this matter.
We live in a wonderful city. I always tell people, living in the city of Port Ritchie, is like living in Mayberry. And I want to bring back this city if it kills me. So I would like to see how our police chief and our fire chief would like to get together some December evening, with the fire truck, with candy, with Santa Claus, with the elves, and do what we did years ago as the Piper Group, and let's get back out there and show Port Ritchie that we're here, and, you know, let the kids have some fun. We, we, in the past, I know we've done the toys and whatnot. I, I say we start slowly, and, you know, just take Santa out there, let's get some music on the fire truck, let's, let's take our time, if that's possible, going through the neighborhood, so the kids can come and see, and, and, you know, get some candy from Santa. And I wanted to get your input from the council, and also, I wanted to get you gentlemen, see, you know, because you're, we're going to need those cars with the lights, and the fire truck with Santa, and, and we need your help, so thoughts?
We've done this in the past, we've done it several times. I have no issue with it. We can put together some volunteers that would take Santa Claus and the elves around.
Can I toot?
Could I, can I make a comment here?
Can I toot the horn again, please?
That we not pick on any height challenge folks as elves?
So that going to be fire trucks that's in the light?
Could I, could I pull the horn again? That was so much fun.
You could drive the truck if you want to.
All right. Anybody, so if anybody in the audience that's here tonight would like to join us, you know, you know, put some festive gear on, and if it's okay with the council to go forward, I'd like to set a date that we could do this, and let's get on down the road here.
Chief?
Yes, I'm in agreeance with this. This goes right in line with our community-oriented policing that we've been activating again.
Yay.
So we got motion on board. What, a discussion from council?
I don't think there's a heck of a lot of discussion to be had at that point, you know?
Mention a date.
I mean, volunteers from council, yeah. I mean, did we, we used to have, Kevin play Santa Claus here, too, and hand out candy to kids and stuff, so I don't know if you're looking at that, but...
Well, we have, we have, I'm sure we'll have plenty of volunteers for whatever, whomever wants to do it, and we can, you know, ask people that want to dress up as helpers, you know, just to get festive, and so on and so forth, and, but I'd love to pick a date, and I, I've already asked, kind of put the word out with some residents, and said that, you know, if they want to chip in with some candy and whatnot, and I was also going to go see if I could get, unless one of you guys have a better relationship with the Walmart manager. No.
Not me.
Okay. I was hoping that we could get some candy, maybe some of the, you know, some of the residents and businesses and whatnot will help, help us. So if you have any influence there, that'd be great. Yes, Pastor?
Yeah, just let me know, I'll see what I get the churches to do, let the members bring in or what, so just give us a date, what you're going to do, and we'll see what we do.
Got a date?
Can we pick a date? Let's get my book out.
I would probably be best effed up to the chiefs here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
The 24th and the 31st, so the last two weeks of December are shot.
The children, it, it would be probably a really good idea to do this when the children are off of school. Wait, well, wait, maybe not. Let's discuss that. It's either going to be, we might, we might want to wait until, we might want to do it before the children go off on vacation, because of the fact that some of the residents may take off and go someplace, so...
And the children will be around in the evening, because it's a school night, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want to miss the kids, that's what this is all about.
Yeah, what's the, is...
Oh, you want to do it on a weekend?
Yeah.
How are, how's the staff feel about the weekend?
We're on duty no matter what, so it doesn't matter.
Tom, Tom, don't forget him for Ritchie's parade.
Maybe you would catch more people at home on a Wednesday or a Thursday night.
That's what I was looking at, was a weekday, because it's going to start, you're going to start it fairly early, you'll be done by dark, you know, because you don't want to be too late into the evening. I know it gets dark at 5:30, but I mean, like, 8 o'clock, you should be done.
Just for the record, Pasco County schools are on break from the 22nd through the 31st.
Oh, I was just going to look that up, thank you.
22nd, so that's your range, 22nd Monday, 23rd Tuesday.
Should we look around the 18th?
You can't do the 18th.
The 18th, is it Thursday night? Is Thursday night work?
Yeah, that might be better, I mean, you know, for the staff, that, on a weekend, you know.
Long-term weather forecast.
Sounds like Thanksgiving's going to be pretty chilly.
Christmas parade.
What date is that?
You know, we can have people that, that can go out there and walk. Hey, Pastor Lord, you have people that sing at your church.
That'd be good.
Well, maybe some of your, some of your church members would, would like to come out and do some Christmas caroling along with it.
That would be great. I'll see if I can get a prison worship leader and a couple guitars, I'll have to check their schedule. So give me a date, and I'll...
December 18th, how's that, everyone?
Eighteenth?
Thursday.
Okay, times.
Chief?
We will start around 5:30?
Fire station, is that where you start and where, where you meet?
Probably.
Yeah, we'll meet at the fire station, that's a good place for everyone to park.
Five thirty's fine, yeah.
Eighteenth, 5:30, fire section.
The 18th.
And you want candor, candy musicians and singers?
Yeah, now, you guys are going to have to stay a little bit away from Santa Claus, unless, unless we play the, we'll play the music, and they can sing to that music, or if, can, can we hook them up, ooh, can we hook them up, the guitar players, can we hook the guitar players up onto the, with a, an amplifier, onto the, the fire truck?
Well, now, the last time we set up something in the city, our monitors were too loud, we had to turn them off, so are we going to be the ordinance stuff? But yeah, that'd be great if we...
We might have some influence to get a special event. Is that what you think? You might be...
Maybe we, maybe we can call the city council.
Maybe the council might get us a special event.
But that's a thought, you could have your guitar players playing Christmas music. Would that work, Chief?
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
I like that candy attitude.
You're going to set up this stage on the truck.
We've, we've had, I don't know if you're going to be able to put people in there singing, you can put an amplifier on it, and run the amplifier from the, from the apparatus. The problem is, putting people on it, is you don't have any place for them to be. All of our cabs are enclosed.
Okay, so now, so then it wouldn't be a good idea to have singers, because if we're, I'd like to have Christmas music on the fire truck somehow, with the generator, can we do that?
You could have Christmas music on it, yes, you could have.
You could sing with that music.
You could sing with that music, and, yeah, yeah, just, because your group's fun, they'd enjoy that, I'm sure.
I'll tell you, years back, with hot chocolate and cookies, and did the caroling to the doors, and giving cookies and hot chocolate, and they were around the neighborhood, that worked good, but this'll be good.
How many singers do you have?
I don't know, I'll have to see their schedules.
We can put them in the back of the squad car.
Oh, holy night.
All right.
There's a singer.
Okay, I'm not allowed to do that. Okay, so 5:30, Christmas in Port Ritchie, and all the council people coming? City manager?
Oh, I'd love to be there.
Mayor? Okay.
Ma'am? What area are you looking at doing this at?
Everywhere.
That's an awful long walk for people that are walking and caroling.
Well, we'll figure that out, that's the least of our worries.
Oh, is that, okay, okay.
We got trucks, don't we, Leonard?
Yeah, bring the motors, or we'll make it too long.
But...
Yeah, we could take, I truck.
We'll go through the, we'll go through the east side, and then we'll go from there, and hit the south side, and then come up through the north side.
And what about the west side, Wes?
Well, well, the west side is...
Better make a route, give it to the west side.
We don't have a west, well, we have two west sides, one's north, one's south.
Mm-hmm.
So southwest and northwest. Northwest will be the biggest one, so we'll go there last.
We'll do whatever. We'll make it work.
Now, what happens if you get a call?
You're going to be in a truck that would be a second-run vehicle. We'll still have our first-run truck in service.
Okay, and then the police will be out there with their little lights.
Their little lights.
We just want to, I just, I just want to create a lot of ruckus in the neighborhood, let people know we're out there. And is there any way that we can get the information out prior to the event?
I can post it on the website, and I can also publish it in the newsletter, that's coming out in December, and our Facebook page.
Okay. Okay, you got a date?
Okay, Nancy, getting flyers and putting them in race track and salvation and arguing your things around is good, too, that's what we normally do, get it out. You know, I guess everybody on the websites, anyway, if you can get some hard copies, we can get them out.
Maybe you could hold a Marvelous Marvin, and he'd put it on radio.
Yeah, we might be able to do that, we'll see. Yeah, just, just, you know who might do it is 106, what's her name?
Steve Shurdell.
Steve Shurdell, yeah, yeah, we got it in there. Steve Shurdell and Sue Campbell.
We can also do a press release.
Yeah, do that, too. Well, nobody reads the paper, do they?
Anything else? All right, we're at the end of the agenda, and seeing no further business, I'll consider this meeting adjourned.